Good Tuesday afternoon, guys. My name is Jerry Miller and welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. We are live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth, the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. We are powered by crazy fast Ting Fiber Internet. This network offering you the best price point for the best internet possible. You can save $288 through the link that Judah Wickhauer is putting on screen right now, iloveceville.ting.com. In a time where internet is paramount to success in the world because of COVID, Ting, your best choice. And it ain't even close. A lot to cover on the show. Today's show I'm extremely proud of, extremely proud of. Counselor Lloyd Snook in the house. The man is a wordsmith, he's a straight shooter, and he's going to be on the program to talk Charlottesville City Hall, the Chip Boils hire, and where we go from here. I'm going to start the show in a matter of moments with this question, and I'm curious of your opinion. How do we fix City Hall? How do we change the Charlottesville narrative? And how do we move forward now that we have a CEO, a North Star in place? How do we move forward in a positive light to get this world-class city on a world-class track? So that's going to be the theme of the program. Some subplots of the show are the influx of retirees. We're getting to the Charlottesville metropolitan area. So according to Realtor Magazine, a national publication that every Realtor in the country gets, according to Realtor Magazine, the city of Charlottesville is number two in the United States for retirees who are choosing to relocate or move to another city. Seaville's two. Get this. Are you ready for this? Wade's Borough is number three in the United States. Roanoke, four. Orlando is number one. The Commonwealth in totality has the most amount of retirees flocking to it who are moving, according to Realtor Magazine. So that's another impressive statistic of this town we love so much. I'm going to ask this question. How will that impact Charlottesville? Having retirees with bags of money coming to our town and scooping up the limited real estate inventory we have? That's a topic for today's show. I'm going to play some sound from yesterday's interview with Chip Boils. He's been in some tough situations, man. You know, he is up to this challenge. And I'm going to give you about two minutes of video and audio from Chip about some of the tough situations he's been in his professional career. So what he's facing now at City Hall is nothing new for this man. Okay? We're also going to talk some UVA basketball. UVA is 12 in the coaches poll, 13 in the AP poll. The game against NC State on Wednesday has been postponed because of COVID and the Wolfpack basketball program. Virginia Tech and Boston College got postponed on Wednesday night as well. And Duke falls out of the top 25, boys and girls. Get ready for a jam-packed program. Hit that like button and share the show on any of the social media platforms you're watching. The lead is something we've been talking about that needs our attention. How do we fix City Hall? How do we fix Charlottesville? I touched on this briefly yesterday, and I want to relay some more of those thoughts and perspective. There's a large portion, large portion, I'm not going to quantify it by a percentage, but there's a large portion of central Virginia who will not shop in the city of Charlottesville because in their eyes, they want to punish Charlottesville for its dysfunction within local government, how August 12th was handled, the removal of the statues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a large population of the central Virginia community that says, we're going to boycott Charlottesville. Have you seen the boycott Charlottesville Facebook pages and Facebook groups? First off, to all the people that are choosing to boycott Charlottesville that live in central Virginia, folks, get a grip. The values of your property and the security of your place of employment are tied to Charlottesville City and are tied to Charlottesville having some positivity, success and a strong brand. So the boycott Charlottesville movement, I can't tell you how ass-backwards that thinking is. You're literally hurting your retirement. You're literally causing distress to your assets by boycotting the city if you live in central Virginia. Okay, so let's put that to aside. Let's acknowledge at least that there is this boycott Charlottesville mindset. From my standpoint, how we can change this mindset is to change the narrative. And how we change the narrative of dysfunction is by creating harmony, is by filling the deputy city manager positions. It's by taking these openings in City Hall and putting competent, able and hard-working bodies in their seats and at their desks. So if we're going to fix City Hall, we need to change the narrative. Michael Payne started that narrative change. And Michael Payne started that narrative change last week with a very open, perspective letter to Charlottesville tomorrow about the dysfunction in local government. We had Chip Boils on the show yesterday outlining some of his goals and strategies for creating unification and to use the counselor's terminology, stabilize the organization. We're going to have Counselor Lloyd Snook in-house today, and we are going to further offer perspective on how we're going to stabilize the organization and move forward in 2021 so we can do the following. Are you ready? Manage this damn pandemic from the ground up. Create a sense of vibrancy and huff some life into the small and medium-sized businesses that are dying on the operating room table. They need the paddles and they need them pumped on their chests to save their lives. And these type of initiatives, affordable housing, social justice, bridging the wealth gap, these type of initiatives start with a stabilized government. So for us to change the narrative and to gain tailwinds behind Charlottesville instead of headwinds, we need to show that City Hall can figure some things out. Now, I had a fantastic 28 and a half minute interview with Chip Boils. The entire interview was great. It was very good. I encourage you to go to iloveceville.com, wherever you get your podcasts, and listen to the interview. Your future's depended on it. Okay? This man's got a 12-month contract. He's got to perform. And after 12 months, if the man has not performed, five people can say, we're not going to renew. Okay? I asked Chip, are you up for this challenge? His answer, phenomenal. This is not the most difficult situation he's been in. Ready? Judah Wickhauer, you got that sound for me? Let's get that sound ready to go. Chip Boils, newly minted city manager on difficult situations as a professional. Judah, in three, two, one.
I've walked into some pretty tough situations in the past.
I heard. Let me jump in here. Keith Smith told me this. Keith Smith was, okay, we have a lot of common friends, and all the common friends we have speak incredibly high and have great things to say about this gentleman, Chip Boils. Keith said, and I'll put it in a nutshell, when you took over the post that you just left, they were about 30 days from going bankrupt and had some serious internal issues, and I'll leave it at that. And you really brought the team together, and now you guys are the major player where all the jurisdictions are looking for help from you guys.
I would love to be able to tell you that coming into the PDC was my worst, you know, beginning experience. Not even close.
Wow.
The role I took in Baton Rouge, we were on the, it wasn't the front page, but it was a leading page of the Washington Post about some HUD money that had been mismanaged. Lots of HUD money mismanaged before I got there. A department that was, oh man, in complete disarray on a much smaller scale, my city manager position in Maryland. My first day on the job, as I walked in at 7:30 in the morning, there were 15 people lined up at my door because their cars had been towed for street sweeping the night before. First time in the history of the city they had ever towed cars. Someone at the city decided to do it on the night before I started my job. So I've been in some tough situations. This one is very tough, but I have received nothing but the honest commitment, and I truly believe in it, from the mayor and council, that they are committed to make this better along with the entire community. And the support I've gotten over the last few days, you know, just makes me feel that much stronger about it.
That's Chip Boils, newly minted Charlottesville city manager, yesterday on the I Love Seaville Show. The interview in totality, wherever you get your podcasts, on every social media platform possible and on iloveceville.com. Last year, our network reached over 253,000 unique IP addresses within 60 miles of Charlottesville, Virginia. Folks, that's an impactful amount of reach that we have here. Okay? The next piece of, the next topic on our agenda is, should Croze become a town? And Tanisha Hudson, I'll get to your comments. I have no problem relaying your comments on air, Tanisha Hudson. Okay? They just got to be respectful, please. I have no problem relaying your comments on air, Tanisha. I absolutely will. They have to be respectful, please. Stephanie Wells Rhodes, welcome to the broadcast. Four different, five different states now watching the show. Richmond, Northern Virginia, Charlottesville and central Virginia on the show. This topic came up also on Real Talk. Real Talk this morning with Keith Smith was damn good. It was damn good. The topic, should Croze, Virginia become a town? Should it become incorporated into a town? Scottsville's a town, for example. Scottsville in Almaro County is a town. Okay? And we were bantering back and forth about Croze and whether or not Croze, Virginia should become a town. I want to relay to you what someone who has a master's in, was it a master's in planning? Think of master's in planning from Penn State University. This comment was one of the most, this was one of the best comments we've ever gotten on the I Love Seaville Network. This comment is from Mark McKenney. And the comment is this, he's a Crozation. He's got a master's in planning, he's an Army veteran, and he follows local government inside and out. He says, Jerry Miller and Keith Smith, Mark McKenney of Croze, Croze as a town is a double-edged sword. Conceptually, one would think it's a great idea. Give the town the ability to control growth and zoning. Realistically, it is not a great idea. Croze as a town would have to raise revenue, which means more taxes on top of what is already paid by residents to the county. Also, there is nothing stopping the county from growing areas outside of quote "town limit," quote, which would then impact the infrastructure issues within the town of Croze, specifically schools, roads and first responders. Also, Jerry, a portion of revenue would not go to the county and would then go to the town instead. For example, meals tax, the possibility of utility tax. So why would the county then turn and invest other county tax dollars into infrastructure issues within Croze? And then he gives the example, Mark does. He says, here's a good example, Jerry. Scottsville was incorporated in 1818. It currently has roughly 600 residents in its town. Its town budget is $550,000. If Croze has more than 10,000 residents, and we all think it does, just think of what the size of the town budget would need to be to support a town the size of 10,000 or more. Very compelling argument, why Croze should not, should not be incorporated into a town. Chris Henry, he's a visionary developer and builder, Stony Point Development. He had this comment to say, Almaro County is better off as one instead of being chopped up. Okay? So your thoughts? Croze being incorporated into a town, a lot of Crozations want it, a lot of Crozations are opposed to it. One thing I do know about Croze is if you're not seeing the infrastructure issues that are clearly on the horizon, you ain't reading the tea leaves correctly. What do you have? Two ways to get an out of Croze? Okay? As the density continues to get deeper, you will undoubtedly have infrastructure issues tied to roads and schools, and frankly, it's already happening. What are your thoughts? Put them in the feed. What are your thoughts? Put them in the feed. Six states watching the program now on the I Love Seaville Show. Lloyd Snook, two minutes away. All right, I want to get a couple of topics out before we get to Counselor Snook here. Realtor Magazine, Realtor Magazine, a national magazine that every Realtor in America has gotten, has released some data. There's Counselor Snook, Judah Wickhauer. I'm going to go and slide over here. Counselor Snook, good afternoon. Judah, if you can go to the studio camera for us, we'll get you here, Counselor Snook.
I'll get to that retiree story in a matter of moments. For all those that are watching, Counselor Snook and I, we both have masks on and we are eight and a half feet away. So mask on and eight and a half feet away. I'm really saying this to my wife, who is very cautious. This is Miller. We have masks on, we're eight and a half feet away. Okay, here is. All right. First, I'm extremely grateful that this gentleman has joined us in studio. Second, I will get back to the topic that the city of Charlottesville has the second most amount of retirees coming and moving to this area in the country, according to Realtor Magazine. So the inventory pinch that we already have going on in the central Virginia region is about to get pinched even more. Show's yours, sir. How are you? What's been going on? How about a personal one here? How's the mental health?
Mental health is, I guess I should say as good as ever and let people conclude for themselves whether that's an actual good or what. You know, it has been a challenging year on council. I must say, when I decided to run for council now, two years ago, I did not imagine that the primary qualification was going to be a degree in epidemiology. And that has certainly affected everything that we have tried to do. It kind of derailed us. I remember in March a year ago, I had just come back from a meeting of the National League of Cities up in DC. Sina McGill and I had been up there, we'd gotten all kinds of great ideas, things that we wanted to do, and then the very, literally the day we got back, wham, we got hit with the, first the governor and then the city council saying, whoa, we're putting a stop to basically everything that we're doing. We are not going to be able to talk about new anything, really. We've just got to put a stop on spending until we have a sense, number one, of what our tax revenues are going to look like, number two, what additional expenditures we're going to need to make just to keep people, you know, safe and healthy. And so almost immediately, the budget got thrown up in the air. Finally, after a couple of months of trying to figure it out, we decided we would just go back, use the past budget for the next year. Nobody gets any increases, and let's just cross our fingers on tax revenues. And so we've spent most of the last, I'd say, we spent most of March through about June trying to figure out what we could reasonably estimate for tax revenues. And the revenue people, Commissioner Revenue Todd Divers, Treasurer Jason Vandiver, plus the finance and the budget people, came up with a model that assumed that we would have about $5 million less in revenues, but provided for as much as about $10 million, just in case. And so we had not only some cuts in the budget, but also we had set aside, we decided we would not make the contribution of roughly $7 or $8 million to the capital fund for this coming year and hold that as a reserve. So for various reasons, we had a reserve of about $7 or $8 million. We almost immediately had to make that more like $6.6 million. And now, because of tax revenue shortfalls and so on, it looks like, as we sort of work it out on an annualized basis, that we've got a shortfall, probably about $5 million. So we're already, we've already used up two-thirds to three-fourths of our contingency fund. And so it's just been a real challenge to figure out, and it's a constantly moving target. And I give great thanks for the efforts of people like Jason Vandiver, like Todd Divers, like the budget and the finance staff, for their constant monitoring and constant reassessing of whether the model is valid, whether, just what the new projections are. And I think we're in good shape, but you know, anytime you get halfway through the year and you've used up three-fourths of your contingency, you got to be concerned.
You worry. You worry. You've got a lot of people watching and giving you a heads up. Counselor Snook, you got the Daily Progress, you get the Seaville and NBC 29 watching. You got two of your colleagues on the Almaro County Board of Supervisors tuned in as well. Tanisha, I promise you, I will get to your comments. I promise you, Tanisha. All right, open-ended. The last four or five months, you're a hell of a writer, so you'll appreciate this reference. The last four or five months have been essentially like a Hollywood movie script. It's like, Lloyd, it's been like-
It's a bad movie, though.
Dude, it's like Can't Miss Television. Can't Miss, I mean, I'm serious, man. I mean, it's been like, it's been captivating, we've had turnover, we're all worried. I mean, we've had deputies leave, new city manager. We love John Blair on this show, goes to Stanton. You guys go closed-door meetings, you got to find a guy in the bottom of the ninth inning, you're scrambling. I mean, it's been crazy, right? I mean, it's like a movie script. Give us some perspective here.
Okay, so let's go back and just kind of pick it up. You know, a moment ago, I was talking about dealing with the budget. We finally get a budget approved in mid-May. That is the one-year anniversary of Dr. Richardson having come, and we're supposed to give him a one-year review. And that begins a process of closed-door meetings and so on, because it's a personnel matter, and those are all closed-door. So we start through that process, and it literally takes us a month and a half until we finally come out with sort of a work plan for what we want to have done going forward with Dr. Richardson. And then at the tail end of August, Dr. Richardson says, I'm out of here.
What happened?
I can't really comment on that. It's an odd thing, because I supported Dr. Richardson all along. I thought I would have been very happy to have him stay. And I thought that when we finally got to the situation in July and August where we had an agreement on that, that I thought we were, I thought we were in good shape to move forward. I have my own theories as to what happened. I'm not going to get into those theories at this point. Suffice to say that by mid-September, we had to, he had told us at the end of August, and then we scheduled a time for, I guess September 12th, I think, was officially the date that we made public the fact that he was leaving. In the meantime, lined up John Blair to step in as acting city manager. So John steps in as acting city manager in-
How's that conversation go? I mean, this is basically what happened. You guys and your four counselors go to an attorney and say, will you be the interim?
Well, okay, actually, I didn't, I was not a part of that. I think, I think it's actually probably Mayor Walker went to John Blair.
So she made the call on her own?
With agreement, but I mean, it wasn't that she said, oh, by the way, I've got this all worked out, boom, this is it.
Do you guys regret that? Because it seems from the outsider's perspective, you're the pro, I'm the outsider, seems like from an outsider, Blair was a hell of a city attorney. Hell of a city attorney. And then he gets into this other interim role, which frankly, doesn't have the experience for, and then maybe gets burnt out or is uncertain, and then heads to Stanton. You know I love John Blair, you know I love Stanton, I'm not knocking Stanton, but from a career standpoint, going from city attorney to Charlottesville to city attorney at Stanton, that is not a, that's a down in a career standpoint. You know what I'm saying?
I would like to think that anything-
From Charlottesville, okay.
Is a down.
And that's why he's good at his job right there. Look at that very good answer from the counselor, who's also an attorney. I mean, jump in here. John left.
I, you know, at the time, at the time that we decided to get John into the picture, number one, we were at a point where we didn't have a lot of choices. Again, it was a deadline kind of a thing. It was right around the same time, I'm not sure the exact timing of it, but Paul Oberdorfer said he was leaving at the end of the year. We knew Letitia Shelton had come with Dr. Richardson and frankly, would have suspected, as she of course has now announced her departure, that perhaps she wouldn't be long for the organization as well. So we needed to do something else for a city manager, looking around for internal candidates because it would be very difficult, we thought at that point, to get somebody external. John Blair was mentioned. And John is a very capable guy. He knows the city of Charlottesville, he knows city government. He knew sort of what he was getting into, and there are a lot of reasons why it seemed like a good idea at the time. If we had known at the time-
It would have led to his exit. You probably wouldn't have done it, right?
We might, we might well not have. And the particular thing, though, that we have to remember is that we decided we were going to launch a search immediately. And finally, in, but so whoever we were going to bring in, we were expecting would be a matter of four to six months. And so we started the process. In October, we wound up interviewing search firms. We picked a particular search firm, Ralph Anderson Associates. The fellow who was our primary contact was a gentleman named Robert Berg.
He's the principal.
Yeah, and-
You liked him because he called it as, he was a straight shooter.
That's right.
Brutally straight.
He told us from the very beginning, the very first meeting, he kind of almost took me aback that he was so blunt with us in saying, this is not going to be an easy hire. You all have problems, and you haven't worked through those problems yet, but let's try to see what we can do. And he said to us in October, I've worked with a number of situations of divided councils with divided, you know, where there's not unanimity on how we ought to proceed. This can work. And so four of us voted for Mr. Berg. Mayor Walker did not. We then begin the process of getting him engaged in and signed up and the contract signed, all that stuff, engaged in how he's going to move forward. And in the first or second week in December, he starts interviewing first staff members and then ultimately counselors. December 14th, he interviewed me. On December 10th, he, on December 10th, Mayor Walker had apparently sent an email to his people saying, I'm not going to meet with Mr. Berg-
One-on-one.
One-on-one.
Yeah.
But only within a group. And to me, that, and her reason, as she explained it to us, had something to do with, she was mad at me for having inferred something at the first meeting in December about one of her emails that, where she had said she didn't want to work, she didn't want to take the time to bring up to speed other counselors, and she wanted to work with Heather Hill in this particular, on this particular issue of the strategic plan. And the other counselors had said, you know, about, speaking about me, hey, you know, Mr. Snook, I have written a strategic plan before. I have been a part of strategic planning efforts before. I don't need to be brought up to speed. And she sent me a rather snarky email where she said, you should Google the strategic planning process to see how difficult this is. And I said, I don't need to Google it. I've done it. Anyway, so counselors had said-
So her punishment to you is not meeting one-on-one with the national search firm that's being earmarked or entrusted with finding the CEO of the city?
Right.
Because that makes no sense to me, right?
The most important decision council makes-
Without question.
Is who is going to be our leader.
Yes.
And I told her, I thought this is an abdication. And so anyway, to make a long story short, Mr. Berg, after learning about all of this, says, you know, divided is one thing, dysfunctional is another. I've never seen a council as dysfunctional as you guys right now. I don't recommend trying to hire a permanent city manager right now and would not recommend doing so for another year. Obviously, what that means is there would be an election in between, and the city of Charlottesville, the people could decide what direction they wanted to go in, and issues would be presented to the voters, and people could move forward from there. But at the moment, he says, don't bother. It's not going to work. I can't do it. Don't think anybody can.
And this is a professional who gets paid to hire the spot. He's basically saying, I'm not going to get tens of thousands of dollars from the city of Charlottesville. This does not make sense because there's so much dysfunction. And at that point, you penned a very honest flip book of what was happening on your city council Facebook page.
Right.
And you wanted to clear the record because Nolan Stout wrote a story, and he had not touched base with you via phone or not talked with you because his deadline was so tight. And as a result, he writes the story characterizing the dysfunction of the search for city manager, and it didn't have all the details it should have had. So you wrote something on Facebook that frankly, Lloyd, I thought was needed. It was honest, and it let folks know what was happening.
Well, and Nolan's story-
And someone from the Daily Progress is watching, so we would think that would be Nolan.
Okay, and that's fine. I expressed this to Nolan, I said, if you want to contact me, there- I said, if you want to contact me, there, first of all, during the workday, it's a reasonable bet to start with calling my office phone.
Yeah.
You know, given COVID, I'm not in court very often these days. So call me at the, or send me an email. But I think what he did, he sent me an email to my council address, which, you know, I don't blame him, but it's not what I look at day in, you know, minute by minute during the workday. And so I didn't get back to him until after his deadline. And in the story, he had been talking about the email that Chief Brackney had sent where she-
Oh, yeah.
Was basically lambasting Berg for various things. The interview that Berg had had with her and a couple of others on December 4th, she was very upset by. And so Nolan's story, I thought, left the impression that the reason why Berg had bowed out was because of his interactions with Brackney.
Unprofessional contact with Brackney. That's undoubtedly what the story gave the impression of.
Yeah. And my point was, no, that's not why he backed out. I talked with him about the Brackney interview. He seemed puzzled by it. He affirmed that many of the details were the same. I mean, it's not like they were talking about two different conversations entirely. But he professed to be mystified as to why she had reacted the way that she had reacted.
The speculation is because of the strategic alliance with the mayor, and the mayor does not like this guy or the search firm. That's the speculation.
That's certainly a speculation. I don't, I don't need to go there.
Okay, that's fair.
I don't specifically go there. But, you know, I also, I talked to the other people who had been present during the meeting. Neither of whom described the interview in the way the Chief Brackney did. Both of them described Mr. Berg as direct. Was a one adjective they used. Abrupt was another adjective they used. Both of which fit my characterization of him. And ultimately, both of them wound up saying, not unprofessional, but simply cutting through a lot of stuff.
He's a no bullshit guy.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, so that's why I wrote what I wrote. And, you know-
You made news writing that, which you knew you would make news, but that made news. That turned the news cycle. You and Michael Payne, and the mayor's been doing this for years, but you and Michael Payne turned the news cycle by honest perspective. And I think the community, the community is almost like craving this. Because the closed-door emergency sessions to get the city manager, we understand you were in a bind, and you guys do what you got to do in that spot. But the flip side of that is the lack of transparency for this.
And, you know, I have, I have chafed under the requirement that we maintain confidentiality about personnel matters, which is actually, you know, it's not a legal requirement. We are allowed to, if we want to discuss questions of hiring of the city manager publicly. Some places do that publicly. We have not. And certainly evaluations and that kind of thing, we have not made public. But if you look through the Freedom of Information Act, there is no, there is a permissive exemption for those things, but it's not a mandatory exemption. Well, I also feel as a matter of good faith with the other counselors that we've all been operating under certain ground rules and so on. And I have tried to obey those ground rules where I can, but I also don't want false impressions to be out there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So it's a difficult choice, and it's a choice that I sort of reevaluate every, every time I look at it, saying, is this, is this the sort of thing where I want to take it public? Or is this the sort of thing where, no, it's not that big a deal. I'm going to let it, let it sit. And I've chosen a couple of times recently to make things a bit more public than perhaps some of my other colleagues might have preferred.
Well, I think the community welcomes that and thanks you for that. All right, so we got Chip Boils. We'll get to Chip in a second. What do we, the phrase that you guys are all commonly using, or at least I've seen Counselor Hill use it, Counselor Payne, and you use it, is stabilize the organization. I have not seen Counselor McGill or Counselor Walker use that phrase, but three of you guys have. How do we, all right, straightforward question. How do we stabilize the organization when on social media there is what appears to be dysfunction with you and the mayor? Is that fair? Is that a fair question?
Well, certainly, the mayor and I, you know-
I'm trying to be fair here.
Right. And I think it is fair to say that the mayor and I don't get along on a personal level terribly well. That is not, I mean, we don't, we don't throw things at each other. And I honestly think that on an awful lot of substantive issues, we actually line up better than she would be willing to admit. But there have been a few things where, you know, she decided before I even was nominated, she characterized me in a magazine article.
She called you Trump.
Well, she, and she said that I was a white supremacist and worthless and so on.
Same thing she did to Bellamy Brown. When Bellamy Brown, she said the worst, and I'm using this phrase, and it's actually verbatim, the worst kind of toxic shit possible about Bellamy Brown.
Right, and in that same comment, she said, if he got on council, he would be just as worthless as Lloyd Snook would be. So anyway, so that's sort of the background. But that notwithstanding, you know, as I said during the campaign, you know, I've, for 40 years as criminal defense lawyer, I've worked with people who have called me all kinds of names. Doesn't bother me. I've been called worse names by more, you know, by uglier people than the ones who are calling me names now. And I can work with them, and I can still try to get cases resolved with them, even though they're calling me names. And so there have been a number of issues where the mayor and I have agreed, where we have worked toward common goals, and that's continued. The complaint that I've got right now is that we have spent so much of our time and our energy on these issues of who's going to be the city manager, how are we going to choose, how are we going to make these decisions? We haven't been able to do anything we got elected for. And there are important decisions that are going to be coming up in the next few months, looking at the Affordable Housing Plan. We've got to get our comments into the consultant by tomorrow, and that's one of the things I'll be working on tonight until 3:00 in the morning. We've got a comprehensive plan rewrite that's going to be coming later in the year. We've got the zoning code rewrite that's going to be coming later in the year. We've got a climate action plan that is going to be presented. The first aspect of it will be presented to council this afternoon. And we have a general goal of trying to get that resolved by the end of March to get that plan going. There are a lot of things we would like to have happen that don't have to happen on Monday nights. And the more things we can do that don't have to happen on Monday nights, the more we can get away from sort of the drama of all of this stuff and just let's actually get down to work. So we've got these issues that we ran on, climate change, affordable housing, things like that, that we're going to start to work on. It would have been nice if we could have been working on them since last year. But that's not where we are, for whatever reason. There are also issues right now. There are about three different major initiatives going on that deal with the police department. The first is, of course, the civilian review board. The General Assembly passed a statute in their special session last fall that authorizes all localities to have civilian review boards and gives them really unprecedented powers. Power, for example, to be the, I think it's, the phrase is to make binding disciplinary decisions on personnel matters. Well, that's a power that has never existed outside of the chain of command in a police department in Virginia. There are places elsewhere in the country where that kind of authority exists. But typically, within the context of a police commission, if you think about virtually every city, every major city in the country, there is a police commission that has a much greater role than anybody in Virginia, any such body in Virginia has ever had. We don't really know what that means, and it's going to have to get fleshed out. And we're going to have to decide in Charlottesville whether we want to go as far as that or whether, and certainly Chief Brackney would say, no, don't go that far, because it cuts the chain of command out of the discipline of the officers. And I'm not sure that that's even what the authors of the statute intended, but that's how far it goes. So we've got to get into that and got to figure that out. We've got, the mayor and Chief Brackney and others have a group that is something I call Reimagining a Just Charlottesville, I think is what it's called. And I'm not quite sure where that's headed, because I'm not really a part of that. But there would seem to be something major going on in that way. There's a third group, another group that I am a part of, which is a mental health crisis response task force that is trying to get at one of the questions that defund the police has been getting at, which is, are there things that Charlottesville's police are doing that they're not really the best ones to do? If there's a mental health crisis, is that helped by having a guy with a gun and a badge show up?
Sure.
I suspect the answer in many cases is not.
Right.
The problem is, under Virginia law right now, there are some things that only the police can do. For example, if somebody is being taken into the mental health system through UVA's emergency room, for example, on what's called ECO, Emergency Custody Order, sometimes called a Temporary Detention Order, TDO. The law says that the police officer's got to sit there with the guy until a final decision is made and is transported to some facility. That could be 24 hours. 24 hours where a cop just sitting there for no particular reason. So question is, well, could we do that better with a mental health professional of some sort? Would it, you know, there are a lot of other decisions like that that we're going to have to figure out how to respond to. And a lot of, in a lot of cases, the law is set out of Richmond, and we have to figure out how to work around it.
Sure.
So this committee that we've got, this task force we've got, includes representatives from the fire department, but of course, they're part of the emergency response effort, from the police department, from mental health organizations, from some of the members of the community, African-American folks who have been often sort of on the wrong end of some of these kinds of policing efforts. And then Sina McGill and me as the city counselors. So there are at least three things going on here. Plus, we can reasonably anticipate that we're going to get calls for, you know, cutting the police budget by, in one case, one of the common demands is cut it by 60%. Well, the first question is, okay, tell me what you don't want the police to do. Do you want them to not investigate murders? Do you want them to not investigate shootings down on, you know, Sixth Street?
Yeah.
At the same time that some people are calling for defunding the police, other people are calling for more police presence.
Right, right.
So there's a huge discussion we need to be having about policing, and we've not been able to have that discussion.
You also have the West Main Streetscape project. You also have this parking garage that everyone's talking about. You guys got a full plate. And you're basically saying, we want to get to work.
Right.
You want to put aside the vendettas and just focus on work.
And, and so a number of us have been trying to move some of those balls forward, again, with, and I, with things that aren't going to have to happen necessarily on Monday nights.
Questions are coming in. So I'm going to, a lot of questions coming in. Let's get to, we'll get to one from Matthew Gillikin. We'll get to you, Abby. The questions are going to be respectful, or they're not going to be relayed on air, guys. And just going to be straightforward as that. We had that discussion yesterday with Chip Boils. If they're not respectful, we're not going to relay them on air. I'm not even going to paraphrase them to make them respectful. Matthew Gillikin for you. Matthew's passionate about a couple of things. One of them, we know he's passionate, is about the garage. So no surprise, he's got a question for you about the garage. He says-
He and I have been communicating about it.
And you know what? I look forward to it. He puts a lot of good stuff on his page. You respond, and the discussion is usually very insightful. He says, Lloyd, do you have any plan, Counselor Snook, do you have any plan? Okay, do you have any plan to have discussions with Alamo County to see if they will be flexible with the deadline to complete the Seventh Street Garage? Given, one, COVID has slowed things down. Two, it would give the city time to explore creative options to develop the land in a way that is more financially responsible. The current plan results in a parking garage on some of the most valuable land in the city that will not make a profit for 25 years per staff budget projections. You've responded to this on social before.
Well, and so let me talk a little bit about that. First of all, I have, I've said a number of times, I think that if we, if the only thing we did on these two lots was to put up a parking garage, 10 years from now, we would look back at and say, what the hell were we thinking? That that prime real estate is going from one underutilized state to another underutilized state.
You're saying cars.
Well, it's not just, just, the problem is that it's only cars.
Right.
The problem is that, and it would only be two or three levels. If we've got prime real estate there, we ought to be looking at using it as intensely as we reasonably can. And I emphasize reasonably, because, you know, there's some unreasonable suggestions floating around out there. And so the two suggestions that have been raised most, one is to put, as Matthew has advocated in an email, a couple of emails to me in the last couple of days, some affordable housing on top of two or three, two levels of parking. And taking advantage of the fact, which I'm a little bit surprised that the first draft of the city plans that I've seen have not taken advantage of, you've got a hill there that means you could bring cars into a second-story level at grade. And on a first-floor level at grade.
Interesting.
And if you don't have the space, the ramps, whatever, to communicate between the first and the second floors, you save a whole lot of space. You can put a whole lot more cars in there if you don't try to have communication between the first and the second levels. So for example, we could decide, maybe at the first level, and only the first level, would be something that might be publicly available. And the second level might be the place where we put the specific reserve spots for the county.
With the deal with the courts in downtown.
Right. And that might be a way to do it. And then you've got the two levels, and then you put housing above. You could put affordable housing in there. There are some ways to get some funding for that kind of an effort. And if you look at it, okay, here is, here's a situation where the land is about as transit-available as you can be. If you're going to say, we're going to put people there, put people who need transit services there, who need access to social services, that's prime real estate for them as well. So that's one option, is to try to put affordable housing above.
Is that a legit option? And how much does the cost of building that structure go up if you're putting housing on it?
Well, if you decide, and there have been estimates that it would cost $5 million more for the, for building a stronger pediment to enable things to go up higher. I don't know if you put three or four stories of stick built as opposed to concrete and steel, what the cost would be. That's an engineering decision that I've asked some folks for some more guidance on. The advantage of using, of doing affordable housing there is that there's some state and federal programs that allow for money for that kind of effort that would help us get potentially 50,000 square feet more of housing in that area. And you, however, depends on how you decide you want to break up that space as to how many units that actually gets you. One of the problems, of course, is that it's not going to be terribly good for family situations. There's no place to play. There's not going to be a swing set and that kind of thing. But, you know, not all of our housing has to be the same stock. So the other approach to it is to say, we've got, you know, luxury condos within two blocks to the east and two blocks to the southwest, where they're going for $1,000 a square foot. And if we were to max out on that kind of construction, it would be very easy to see how you're going to get tax revenues that are going to pay for the whole thing in a whole lot less than 25 years. So there is, in fact, there are, in fact, some legitimate proposals for other ways to use that space more intensely. Now, I have not talked with other, enough other counselors to be able to say, but it seems to me that we need to reflect on a couple of things. With COVID, obviously, current demand for parking is low. But question is, how much of that is going to rebound? How many more people are going to say, how are their businesses are going to say, How many more people are going to say, how are their businesses are going to say, you know, we've actually done pretty well with people working from home. It's cheaper for us to have people work at home if they can keep productivity up and so on. And so, you know, maybe they decide that they're going to cut in half the number of people they need to have working downtown. We don't know what that's going to look like. There is a real risk, of course, of being overbuilt and wasteful for, for parking. I think I had a fairly good sense in my own mind, pre-COVID, of how I thought it was going to play out, of the demands that would be coming for parking, of the fact that, you know, we've got all this space that's going to be coming online downtown in the next couple of years, and we're going to need to park those people someplace, at least until we can get to a point where transit can begin to take over.
He's talking about co-construct, guys. He's talking about the solar company, is it, or the energy company, Apex by ACAC. There was a lot before COVID.
The 323 Garrett Street.
Yeah. There was a lot of density and work professionals planned for Charlottesville pre-COVID.
Right. And the buildings are going to be there, and the question is, how are they going to use that space?
Right.
And are they going to use that space with people needing parking spaces downtown?
He's basically saying, if these businesses had come online as expected before COVID, there would have been a parking logjam issue, so we would have certainly needed this parking garage. Now that these businesses are dealing with COVID, we do not know how the CEOs will respond and say, work staff, you can come in two days a week, and then that would open up three days a week of parking spaces.
Right.
That's what you're saying, right?
Basically.
Yeah.
And, and that's also going to require, by the way, some greater flexibility in how our parking spaces we have now get administered. Because when I've got, you know, I've got a parking space for everybody in my law firm at one of the two parking garages, but supposing I know that I've only got half of my staff coming in any particular day, the, right now, each space is supposed to, that I, that I own, so to speak, that I rent, is supposed to be attached to a particular vehicle. How's it going to work to say, well, either one of two people may be in that space? How's that, and, and I don't know what the answer is, but that's a discussion that we've got to have. And, you know, just how we evaluate parking in the post-COVID era, I don't know. And we won't really be able to begin to figure that out probably until about a year from now. So the question is, supposing we say, we're, we're not going to build the parking garage quite yet. As I understand the agreement with the county, we don't need their permission to not build the parking garage. But I would want to have that conversation openly and honestly with them so that they don't think we're sneaking around behind their backs or that-
Which Charlottesville has a history of doing that with Almarle County.
Well, and Almarle with Charlottesville, to be fair.
Touche, touche. And Randolph, Supervisor Randolph, at the time when the deal was, you know, finalized, he voiced concern on the record about the city carrying out its promise here.
Right. And I have been probably the most consistent, loudest voice-
You have.
-for building the parking garage.
Because of the, the word thing, your word is your bond. And on top of that, we both work in the Macklin Building. We're here, I'm here like 70 hours a week. You're here longer than I am. We see that there is a parking issue.
Right.
I mean, I know there is a parking, now COVID-
Or there was a year ago.
Yeah, exactly. We don't know if there is going to be a parking issue. I mean, we hope to God for the ownership here that there is a parking issue downtown.
Yes.
But that's a topic or another. So, finish this topic. What's going to happen with this thing?
Well, I, I need to, to pursue the conversation I want to have with, with my colleagues. And one of the things that I would say is, you know, my support for building the, the parking garage has been assuming that we in fact have this need, that I'm not sure we will have, at least in the next year or two, but that I would like to have a common understanding, and in particular with Michael Payne and Sina McGill, about, because of course, you know, we know, you know, it's highly unlikely, I think, that, it's certainly unlikely that both Heather and Nakaya will be back and may well-
Is Heather going to run again? I don't get the impression Heather's going to run again.
I don't think she is.
Yeah.
She hasn't publicly announced it, but I don't think she is.
I don't think she is either. Nakaya is. Mayor Walker is.
She has said so. She has also occasionally said things that might be interpreted the other way. I'm assuming that she is.
Me too.
The point is that I, I want to get an understanding that my change of heart, if, if that's what I come to, is not based on a, you know, what, what some might say, a sort of rejection of the car culture and that sort of broader philosophical issue, but simply a recognition that at the moment-
COVID's changed marketplace dynamics.
And, and whether it's a temporary or a permanent change is the issue that we can't now assess.
Yeah, that's fair.
And so-
That's a brutal position to be in.
Yes.
I mean, you're talking about, how much does this darn thing cost?
Eh, up to, up to 10 million.
Yeah, 10, 10, and probably going to be more than that when it's finished.
Well, we've already spent some, but-
Yeah.
But the-
That's a brutal position.
It's a terrible position for a lot of reasons. Number one, I hate the position of-
Breaking the word with Almarle County.
Well, breaking the word, I also hate the position of putting the issue back on the front burner in another one or two or perhaps three more city council elections. One of the things that I had really hoped was that we had gotten to the point where we could take that issue off the front burner and just build the darn thing and move on. But the reality is, the realities have changed. And so, for the whole lot of political reasons, it's a terrible situation. Now, here's the problem. We have, uh, we have capital needs in Charlottesville that include perhaps $10 million a year for affordable housing, perhaps $10 million a year over five years or so for school renovations. Those are things, and, and by the way, we have, according to some estimates, perhaps $50 million of additional bonding capacity in the next five years.
That's good.
Well, it's good, but it's not enough. And if we were to max out on our bonding for the next couple of years, we get to a point five years from now where we can't write any more bonds. And we don't want to be in that position. So, we've got these, clearly, schools, and schools are one of the primary functions of any government, and if you're not funding your schools, you're not doing your job. So that's, that's certainly one of them. Schools, what was the other, affordable housing is certainly a hot topic and people care about it deeply, and it's necessary to address, to sort of counteract a lot of the gentrification kinds of problems that the fact that Charlottesville is otherwise an attractive place to move to is causing.
I mean, we just, we just announced that Realtor Magazine Today said Charlottesville, Charlottesville metropolitan area, number two in America for retirees moving to the area. That's going to mean, basically means, older people with big bags of money are coming to this area and scooping up the inventory. That's what that means, guys.
Right.
So that's making the area less affordable. And, and frankly speaking, probably more white, emphasizing that. 12 minutes here, I got it, we got a conference call at 1:45. You've got to make a living here at your law firm.
I try.
I'm truly grateful for your time. Maybe, maybe we do like, kind of like a PTI thing where we go like 30 seconds a topic?
Let's try it.
Okay. What'd you think of the Juan Diego Wade news?
Right. I like Juan Diego Wade a lot.
Me too.
He's a competent guy, not only school board experience, but he's actually got a degree in planning.
Yeah.
Uh, he's, he would bring a lot to the table.
I agree. I, the, this, I love Seaville, completely backing Juan Diego Wade for council. What do you, what do you make of the November 3rd election? I've called it on the net, the network, the most important election in Charlottesville history. That's what I've called it.
You mean the-
The one, the, if Nakaya running again, November 3rd.
Coming up.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, you know, the fact that it's two out of the five and not three out of the five, maybe less so. Of course, I, personally, I would say that my election was the most important in the history of, of the universe. But, you know, it, it is true that we've got a lot of issues coming to the front and-
A ton of issues.
And-
And you're post-COVID potentially.
Right. And it's, it's an incredibly important time, an incredibly important election, and what I'm most interested in, as I said when I ran two years ago, a year and a half ago, was, it was getting Charlottesville to work together, to, to function better. And we haven't been able to do that this year, and we need to, to do that. The people demand it, the people have a right to demand it, and it's really getting in our way that we can't.
How do you empower Chip to do his job in a way potentially that Dr. Richardson was not?
Well, I'm not going to comment about Dr. Richardson, but I will say about Chip that he has a, he has an easygoing kind of manner about him, but don't be, don't think he's an easy touch, okay? He knows what he knows. He has confidence in his own judgment, and he knows, he's got experience in a lot of things that are going to move us in a right, in the right direction. I think he may be able, just by his personality, to be able to sit down with councilors, to get councilors to come together a little bit. And that, that may be a big help.
What do we think, West Main Streetscape project? Any info you can give us?
I am really concerned about the fact that we're basically going to be spending $70 million a mile.
Jesus.
It's not even-
How many total miles is it?
.8.
Okay, so if it was a mile, it would be 70 million.
Right.
Good lord.
Um, and that's not even including the money that the utilities people are going to have to spend-
Underground.
-when we dig everything up. I mean, it's, it's counting the undergrounding of Dominion Power, which is another ripoff that I could go on at length about, but as far as the water and sewer lines in the bottom that have to get replaced, some of which are almost 100 years old.
Help teach us, and help us learn here. Is the pressure with the West Main Streetscape, the free money that's the dangling fruit, is it, is the free money from the Commonwealth to help subsidize this project? Is that right?
Well, okay, the, the free money, so to speak, the Streetscape money, is nowhere near as much a part of the deal now as it seemed to be three years ago.
Oh, what do you mean by that?
Well, the overall costs have risen so much that when the, when the, I think it's $6 million that we're getting from the, from the state, $6 million was a good chunk of 30 million. It's not so big a chunk of 50 million.
No.
Uh, I am, there are a couple of efforts underway to try to figure out if there are ways that we can reduce some of these costs. About $10 million of the costs, as I understand it, is attributable to undergrounding the, the overhead wires from Dominion, from Comcast, from whoever. That's, you know, it gets me so aggravated because when Dominion decides that they, they have decided that they want to underground utilities in the Greenbrier neighborhood, for example, where we've got trees that come down on power lines, it's inconvenient, it's a pain in the rear end, but it doesn't cost them $500,000 a block, either to do it or to repair the damage if they don't do it. Yet they're willing to do it in our area, but they're not, but when we want it done, they come up with this price tag of $500,000 a block.
Well, that's because they got you guys by the cojones there.
That's right. Or a million dollars a block.
I think that's called leverage.
It's called leverage, and, and there is at least some effort in Richmond to take away some of that leverage.
I hope to God. It's the worst monopoly out there.
Yeah, and-
One of them at least.
It's unfortunately not anything we have any control over. So, anyway, we're in a situation where we've got $10 million or so set aside for undergrounding utilities, and that number keeps going up as we go. We've got expenses, I mean, one of the attractions of it has been that it would enable us to deal with bike lanes and pedestrian improvements and so on, but some of those we may end up having to do on our own anyway. There are a number of things that we have not done for many years because we've said, oh, we're going to do it when the Streetscape whole, whole thing comes in. And I've, I said to Paul Oberdorff a couple of months ago, for the benefit of those of us who were not on council when this got approved, give me the sales pitch that should have been given when this whole thing happened, when it was first approved, so that I can understand why it is you think it's so important. Because I was willing to go along with it because I hate revisiting old decisions.
Yeah.
But when you're talking about $20 million more than the initial discussion had been, I, I'm not feeling bound. You know, let's, let's talk about, I, I know, Paul, I guess, you'd say Paul decided to go to Ohio rather than try to give us that explanation. I've not seen the explanation.
Right, 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 right. Some of the, I'm not going to read some of these comments here, guys. I'm just going to leave it at that. Olivia, thank you, Councilman Snook, for your commitment, perseverance, and insightful guidance. We appreciate you here in Charlottesville. Olivia Branch right there. Scott says, Dominion or Comcast, two of the worst monopolies out there. That's from Scott watching. He also acknowledges that there's a parking garage in Roanoke that has affordable housing above it that could be a good reference point for Charlottesville council. All right, two minutes, Councilor Stook, and we'll get out of here. How about a message to the, to, let me ask you this. Does council at all and the school board, do you guys use your influence at all to say, get the kids back in the classroom, or is that completely separate?
We keep it completely separate.
Completely separate. Okay. That was a question that I personally did not, did not, did not know. All right, final question, message to Charlottesville. I mean, we want to stabilize the organization. I mean, we want the government to work. We want the positions to be full. You and I love downtown.
Mm-hmm.
It's empty. We just want to get back to humming. Anything you got to say?
Well, I'll say this. I've said all along that I thought that July 1 was the, the time when we could begin to start to see things pick back up. In this case, we should have a vaccine in a lot of arms by that time, the weather-
Have you been vaccinated?
I have not been. I'm in, I'm in phase 1B.
You're in 1B, yeah.
But I haven't gotten the call yet.
Is that, is that because you're a councillor?
No, it's because I'm old.
Because of age. Okay. Does, do councillors get prioritized for leadership?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Gotcha. So Michael Payne's very deep down. Because he's young.
Michael's going to be about phase 15.
Yeah, I was going to say, right. How old is Michael? Is he 29?
Uh, 28 maybe.
I think he's 20, okay, okay.
Anyway, so, we're going to see things turn around, I think, come July. I hope that people like the restaurant business and so on can hold on until that time. It's been a grave concern to me. First, because Charlottesville as a tourist spot, we need the, the restaurants. And second, because we've got so many people who are kind of marginal wage employees who, who count on that industry for their jobs. I think things will in fact turn around. They will start turning around, turning around this summer, and I hope that by a year from now, we will be able to say, we put the worst behind us and we're, we're on the upswing. And, you know, I think the upswing is going to come starting in July, but a year from now, we should be in good shape.
Man, I hope so. I hope so. He's Lloyd Snook, guys. Thank you for your time.
Glad to come.
Seriously, I'm serious. Thank you. J. Dobbs, could you see Counselor Snook out, if you could? Judah Wickhouse, our director, thank you.
Yeah.
We will archive the show in totality on iloveceville.com and anywhere you get your podcasting, anywhere you get your podcasts. He was honest, Counselor Snook was today. I appreciate that honesty and straightforwardness. You know, I'll close on this. Why don't I close on this note here? Can you, three people, first off, Charlottesville City Council, these are everyday folks. Everyday folks, people, people that live in this community. Everyday folks that live in this community. These aren't politicians. These are neighbors, okay? Mayor Walker, Counselor Snook, Counselor Payne, McGill, Hill, everyday people. And they get a lot of crap and heat and S-H-I-T, okay? First off, we got to remember they're everyday people. And I, and I throw a lot of the crap, heat, and S-H-I-T to them. Now, part of it, they signed up for this job. But can you imagine being Counselor McGill, Counselor Snook, and Counselor Payne? And when they ran for office and, and they made their announcement in early 20, early And when they ran for office and they made their announcement in early 20, early 2020, right? First quarter of 2020. When they chose to run, and that means, if they're making the announcement first quarter of 2020, that means they made the decision in 2019. In 2019, okay? So when they chose in 2019 to run for Charlottesville City Council, no way in their right mind could they have possibly imagined COVID-19 in a pandemic ravaging and raping the community that they're running leadership position for. No way they could have imagined that. So here you have everyday, normal people in our community, underpaid, $18,000 for the councilors, $20,000 for the mayor, getting heat left and right, having massive attrition with employment at City Hall, having city managers quit, deputies quit, positions can't be full, you have COVID-19, you have the economy collapsing, you have the restaurant industry collapsing. I mean, it's been as crappy a time for public service as you could possibly imagine. All safe to say. And here we are. Five people are trying to persevere and take this town, this city, whatever you want to call it, to the other side, the promised land. They want to be the North Star. They are the North Star.